Here's what we need to do. So I say if you haven't read it, you just vote yes.
I'm ready.
Oh, my goodness.
Six seconds. We have three seconds.
He was.
What is that? One pass. It's only one page.
Take one pass one. Take one pass one. And then you can say something.
Good evening, everyone.
Lord, I just thank you for this absolutely beautiful day that we've had to enjoy today. Ask you to help us be all honorably and fairly with all the issues that come before us. Also ask that you'll guide us as we seek to find good people to work for the city and specifically as we are in the search for a city manager, that you would give us the person that will fit the needs and, uh, just be the person that we need here in Villareca. So I thank you for your goodness, I thank you for the rain you sent and the sunshine too, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First on our-
Ronnie.
What else I, Tony? Next figure.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am very fortunate and pleased to present this award tonight. West Georgia Regional Library System is in its second year of presenting excellence awards for individuals, small businesses, large businesses, and organizations that help us to spread the word about library services and what they mean to the community and also help us with those services. Tonight, I am presenting this award to hometown hero Clint Chance, and I'd like for Clint to come up for just a moment. Clint was first- Clint was first appointed to the Villareca Public Library Advisory Board in 2011, and when he was appointed, he hit the ground running. During his first year on the board, he learned of the many years that the board had tried and failed to get funding for a larger library for Villareca. He suggested the formation of an expansion committee, of which he became chair. As chair of the expansion committee, he led the charge for land acquisition for a new building, then asked the legislature for state funding for a building, then asked the city council for local funding to match that state funding. He participated in every facet of the construction project, short of building the facility himself. He attended all construction meetings, even if he had to be on a teleconference call while he was out of town on his home business. He made almost daily trips to the construction site to check on progress and voice his concerns. He made suggestions for improvement and helped to work out problems. Throughout the process, Clint demonstrated his passion not only for libraries, but for his passion of his hometown of Villareca. In fact, it was this passion that helped us win the state and local funding. He's also helped the Villareca Public Library by helping them market their services. He helped them with their first two patron appreciation days. He's the best example that I know of, of excellence in library support. And I would like to present this award to him, and it says, "Excellence awarded to Clint Chance in grateful appreciation and distinguished recognition of your hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence. West Georgia Regional Library Excellence Award 2017 to an individual."
Thank you so much, Ronnie, and for the Regional Library System. When Ronnie called me a couple of days ago and said she would like to present this to me after I was nominated and then selected, I thought I probably ought to put together a thirty-minute acceptance speech for people like Mansour that are inspired by my speaking engagements. I won't indulge you with all that this evening, but I do want to thank you. It's been a journey, not only for the Villareca project, but the county, being able to serve on the county board, and then the chairman of the regional system board with eighteen branches, looking to bring on the nineteenth branch soon in Central Hatchie. So I've learned a lot about lifelong learning and what libraries mean to our community. And although I'm greatly appreciative of this, for myself being recognized, to me, this is an award for everyone, whether it's the mayor and council, everyone out here, whether you serve on a public service board or you're just simply here to hear about your community, to care enough about it. This is, this means that we're recognized and appreciated, and everybody working together, this makes Villareca a better place to live in the West Georgia community. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bless you.
Bless you.
Every year we- ...to the citizens of Villareca, uh, and each year we come up with a dedication for that, uh, for that annual report. This year, uh, we are dedicating our annual report to our support staff, uh, non-certified employees in our, in our department, uh, to include our reception people, our administrative assistant, our court clerk, our GCIC person, uh, and our ID tech. And before I have them come up, I want to let you know, uh, kind of how we feel about them. You know, the police officers, especially nowadays, people come up to us and they thank us for our service and they let us know how much they appreciate us and the job that we do, and, and that means a lot, and we really appreciate that they do that. But, but, uh, these ladies, uh, in, in our staff don't always get that recognition, and yet they're the ones that, that keeps, uh, the motor running and keeps us out of trouble a lot of times and, and takes care of us. Uh, and, and it's kind of funny because I will call, you know, one of them and I'll ask them something, and then they'll, they'll answer it, and then I'll say, "But you really want to answer that right?" And they'll say, "Yeah, this is what you're going to need to do." So they- ...process the crime scenes, they're the ones that, that deal with- Uh, and, and I'm just so proud- Okay. Wendy Baskin. Now Wendy's gonna move a little slow. Wendy crashed her motorcycle many months ago and has since sold that motorcycle. Thank God. But Wendy's a receptionist with us, uh, Wendy has been with us a very long time, how many years now?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years that she's been a receptionist with us, and she's done other jobs too. But Wendy, congratulations and thank you so much. Free to Sheffield. That, that's not why- Ah, God, I didn't realize it's been that, that's great, thank you so much. She, she was ch- Rhonda's been with us less than a year, but Rhonda also volunteered and worked with the rec department for several years and still does that. We kind of stole her from them. Vicky's not happy with me for that, but, uh, she does an outstanding job. She's a day shift. And, uh, the last one is the most recently hired, Donna Moore. Donna works night shift with us as a receptionist, and she's been with us right at a year and does an awesome job for us on nights. Two of them were not able to be here tonight. Shelley Frost is our ID tech. She goes out to the crime scenes and, and takes the pictures and helps lift fingerprints and just does an awesome job, but she also does our Facebook page, and guys, she does a fantastic job on our Facebook page. So if you're not on our Facebook page, please join that. And, and, uh, the other one that, that, uh, Amanda didn't make it. Amanda is our court clerk, and Amanda's been with us probably seventeen, eighteen years at least or more. Is it in here? I think it is. It may not be. I left my glasses. Amanda's been here sixteen years too, and she's our court clerk and does an awesome job. The other two ladies that are here, Terry Bowe. Terry is our GCIC person. Uh, Terry, I'm not gonna tell about your birthday recently because you're getting mad at me, but anyway, Terry- She also does the GCIC. Uh, she also helps us write grants and has gotten us lots of money, thank goodness, uh, through grants, and, and we appreciate the job she's done. And, and the last one's Kelvin Pla- Uh, so she has to put up with me the most, I think, uh, but she also handles the budget stuff and handles the invoices and things like that. She, she puts together the Citizens Academy and, and, and all of that kind of stuff and, and just does an awesome job for us. She worked in Atlanta for, I think she told me sixty-two ye- No. My bad. Thank you, ladies, for all you do, and we appreciate you so much.
Are you out of the way, Jeff?
Hello. Stand up, chief.
I have to keep these three bucks up here.
Some of them will be obsolete after tonight. Some of them will be obsolete after tonight.
Okay, council, you have the printed agenda before you, and, um, had a chance to look at it. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda that's printed? If not, I would- Who did approve? A motion? Do I have a second? Motion to-
I have one, just real quickly, um, since it happens to be VRPD night, a thank you to the police department, especially if my husband doesn't get here to thank them, in public remarks, um, for taking care of some of those trucks over on Punkin Town Road, at least a few of those, and right in- ...email, I didn't have time to answer it. Apparently, a big semi decided to do a, do a three-eighty down by his house, and I was gonna see if I could top that. It's pretty amazing that there's people, you think of where Dogwood is, the, the street that runs, um, right alongside the elementary school, then crosses seventy-eight and curves up around and hooks into South Carroll. While it may be hard to enforce speed there unless we do something like speed bumps, there are people that attempt that road at as much as sixty-one to sixty-five miles per hour, only one there, but things like forty-six to fifty miles per hour on that road, if you've been on that road or walked on those sidewalks, that would be pretty scary. And then hundreds that are ten to fifteen miles per hour over the speed limit, and just mention that as something, as we start to bring up that topic later, that this is an issue that is around the city.
Okay, I want to make a statement. Anybody else? Okay. If not, uh, interim city manager's report.
Hopefully, it'll be short and sweet there. Sarah's still involved in the audit. Seems to be going real good, thanks to the great work they've done, her and her staff. We received our, three of our patrol cars in. They are gonna be sent to be built to metropolitan this week. We also sold the old Crown Vic K-9 car, Buchanan PD bought that, and we already got it outfitted and ready to go. They've got it striped and everything for them to use. We sold that for fifty-five hundred. The mayor, myself, and Vicky went out to the Fullville Trailhead the other day, it's looking great and coming, coming along real good. I spoke to Charles Pope with Carroll County about the roads in Charleston Place, uh, and he stated they're going to, uh, hopefully be able to pave them in June or July for us. I see the smile. But he said he wants to make sure it's good and hot to make sure it does a good job, so... My mic's not on, I'm getting-
Told. Okay, is that better?
That's-
All right. Uh, the police- We per- So- That's the number, okay. Uh, we-
And try to get you together to do that. Uh, listen. For us on that. Uh, and lastly, we have completed the first interviews for community development, and we'll be conducting a second interview on the applicants next week.
For the crowd- Any questions? Okay.
Can I sign, can I sign in later? I'm Kevin Cursey, and, uh, I live at sixty-five Church Road. I live at sixty-five Church Road in Villareca, just right outside the city limits, and it's involving the proposed, uh, land development there, uh, the, with a green community, and I, uh, represent those who are opposed to that. You know, within a half mile, we have a petition that we had signed, uh, gave one to the Planning and Zoning Committee, but just wanted to make sure that you guys got that and so you can pass that around, and then, uh, each of you, council, folks, and mayor can take a, uh, uh, the reasoning behind that. We just wanted you to know, it's not an emotional thing, it's not anti-development or anything like that. Uh, we're hoping something, uh, nice comes in there, you know, one day, but, uh, the particular project, uh, that's been, uh, proposed, uh, for various reasons, and I'll lend it just to two, but, uh, the sewer issue is one, because it involves the city, that is, is best, with our investigation as a landowner, knowing the land, um, that sewer is just like a, is almost an impossibility for the city to get them unless they went to just some unreal expense to take that on. Uh, also, the water mains would have to be upgraded, all the way from Pleasant Road, Pleasant Grove Road. We didn't realize that at first, but that is, the county's already checked with them, and it would have to go all the way to I-20 by law, uh, with the amount of, uh, things that are coming in there. Um, so without septic, uh, being able to have septic tanks, because there's too many units to do that, he's already proposed, uh, twenty-four on ten acres, and now his project is widened to sixteen acres, and so you know that means more units. So septic tanks are out of the way, and so you're left with a self-contained sewer system, and, uh, our investigation of that for our city would just be, uh, to me, potentially disastrous, because legally, and you check with your own attorneys, the developers off the hook in a short amount of time, and then these particular systems have a great propensity to fail, and then the city's left on the hook for that at great expense to their taxpayers and stuff. So sewer is really a nightmare issue, and then the traffic, we already have all the traffic coming in on a Benworth Road. Villareca bypass is the PD and county guys love to describe that, people just coming off seventy-eights and seventy-eights, just making their way around, uh, Home Depot and Walmart and QT and now, uh, other places that they're building. And so with the traffic there, the school traffic, we have a school there, we have young drivers, sixteen years of age then, uh, you know, getting out and operating on that road. We've already had several fatalities, we have subdivision that's digging, trying to get, you know, speed down, and still with all that, there's still a lot of traffic there. And with the entrance coming off Church Road, a little narrow road, only maybe two-hundred-and-fifty yards long, dumping, now you're talking about, uh, perspective, a hundred-plus people sitting there, fifty cars plus dumping out on that little road every day, a permanent thing now. On top of that, with two blind heels at each exit of the road, uh, the traffic issue would be a literal nightmare there. So we would just ask you, and I'm representing, I would say accurately say ninety-five percent plus of those, uh, landowners and, uh, people who live within a half mile where this proposal is proposed, if you would still just consider the problems that they would have there and maybe another place for that, but not right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cursey. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no more public comment, we will proceed with the meeting, and we have our presentation, discussion of selection of a city manager. And, uh, David, do you want to start this, or?
Uh, I'd be glad to start it, just by introducing, uh, Mr. Tom Berry, who is with Underwood and Company, with whom the city has entered into an agreement to help us in the process of selecting our next city manager, and since I don't have a real detailed, uh, presentation to make introducing you, I'll just turn it over to you, Tom.
Better than I have gotten for it. I can tell you what you want to know about me, if you'd like, I'll let you ask some questions. This is only the second search I've done like this, where I've come in the middle, kind of in the middle of your process. You have some good candidates. I've looked, David sent me all the information. So I think we'll need to, together, decide how we move forward, because this is your process, I'm just a facilitator. I'll certainly give you my opinion on all of the candidates. I'll do my best to find, uh, any background information that you might want to find out, uh, or any, uh, anything that, um, you specifically want about a candidate. But in the end, you make the choice, and I am just your facilitator, so that's kind of the, uh, the process, and, uh, I've only done this once before, and like I say, where I've come into the middle. And with that council, I knew every one of them. They were, uh, I had worked in that city before, so it was a pretty easy process. I think we're gonna have to work hard together to, uh, for me to find out what you want in a city manager, and then we, and we find it. And, and you, and you may have it in those existing resumes right now, but we'll just have to see how that goes. Any questions?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, when you say this is only the second one that you've done, you're talking about-
Yeah. Most of them I've taken from soup to nuts, and, uh, that, uh, this is the second one I've done where I've come in the, of the process.
So what I hear you're saying is that you're looking for a, a discussion, uh, whether it be individual or as a group?
What I usually do, if I start from the beginning, uh, I would come in and either meet with the council as a group or individual, uh, find out what you want in a city manager. Then I'd go, if you wa, if, if you wish, and I've done it both ways. Oh, yeah? I'll talk loud. I, that's as bad as not being on camera. And then I'd go to the, uh, department heads, if that's what you wanted, and as far down in your organization as you'd like for me to, to do, and many, many times, the city attorney is actively involved, sometimes they're not. So from that, uh, discussion, I get a really good idea of what you want, uh, and, and it'll be diverse, because you're diverse, you're a diverse group, uh, but, but then I can put that together, I craft an ad. That ad then, uh, will, uh, be as specific as possible to what you're looking for in city manager, and then I expect the candidates to answer that ad, and many times, I'll suggest to you, if they don't answer the ad, uh, if their cover letter does not speak to what we've put in the ad, I, I suggest you don't consider them. Sometimes it's not that- I have a website, and if I'm getting too much into detail, tell me, you've got a meeting to conduct, but I have a website that I would assign each of you a password and an ID and a password. And then I would post, let's say we start with the 10. I would post those 10, I'll convert them, I never do paper. The, when I, when I do these from the beginning, candidates have got to send them in as PDFs. Sometimes they don't send them in as PDFs, and I convert them to that, but it's easier for you to look at. I mean, we're sending paper back and forth, and this has got to be a fairly discreet process, because some of these folks have jobs, and they don't want their name out that they're looking at coming, at the idea of coming to Villarica. So we take those 10, I'll probably convert them to digital, give you an ID, you can then sign in. As I do phone interviews then with those 10, then I'll post information on what I find out from, and it'll be just, I'll ask mostly the same questions, but I'll go through a phone interview with those 10, and I'll probably make a proposal that we narrow that down. You probably ought to get, in the end, to a group of three to five. Interviewing 10 is way too much, because you're going to spend an hour per candidate, that's 10 hours, you don't want to, and there's no need to do that. Then you go through the interview process, let's say you pick five, or we pick five together, then you go through the interview process, and at that point, you would, I would say, and you could do this several different ways, then you would announce, under state law, you would announce, let's say you announce three. Out of those five interviews you do, you see, you find three that you like. You announce those three, and then in 14 days, you can make a final decision on that person and offer the job. And in the midst of all of that, then we could do one or two extensive background checks, however you want to do that. You could, in the end, if you're, if you're together on one candidate, then you could just do a background check on that one candidate. But when I say a background check, it's fairly extensive. You look at credit, you look at certainly criminal, you'd look at education, make sure what they, I mean, I don't check high schools, but we certainly check their masters, if necessary, their bachelors, and anything else we can find. Google searches are great. I mean, you've got a candidate in there that's probably a good candidate right now, but if you Google, do a Google on him, you're going to find something in their background. It may be something that you don't, that doesn't matter, maybe far enough, those candidates may outweigh what you find, but you might not. The bottom line is, you need to know. You don't want to bring a candidate in here that you don't know something about them, and your press finds out, or your constituents find out. That's worse than not having building permits. But it's a similar, similar issue, so.
I get, my issue, from what I'm hearing you talk about, is to, how are you going to determine those 10 people? By, and I'm asking the question of, are you going to speak with us first to find out what we're looking for, and then determine those 10 people?
Absolutely. I hope tonight we'll go through some, and it may not be 10 in the end. It may be five, whatever that might be. And because it's not, you know, if I had been in the beginning, and let's say you ended up with 60, you had got a lot of, a lot of applications, I probably would have pared those down for you, because that's just an overwhelming job, and then made a proposal back to you, maybe on exactly the group that you've chosen as your first tier. And then, but it's not my position to pair any of these candidates down. I will never do that independently without communication. That's why I use the website, and I will expect you all, since I won't be here in Villarica, it's a long way, by the way, from Thomasville. I will communicate with you in whatever method we settle on to determine which ones you want to keep in, which ones you want to kick out, those kind of things. Now, I'll give you my opinion, but in the end, it's your process.
So I guess, we talked about this Thursday, but you intend to stay here for the executive session, is that?
Oh, I'll be here tonight as long as you need it.
So this could be an extended period of time tonight, because it sounds like you brought some of them back for us.
Yeah, I know, I, there's only one or two in your top tier that I even, either haven't had on a search, or I don't know personally. So I can give you some good information on those, and we can have some good discussion, I think.
Good. I think that's good.
Further questions? Well, Mr. Berry, I appreciate you being here, and look forward to working with you, and we need to get this search completed and get a new city manager in here. Not that the one we have is not doing a good job, but.
It's just he don't want it. Was his hair gray before he started?
A tiny bit.
About 20?
He didn't.
Okay, consent agenda.
I think we need to have more discussion about that, don't we?
It's your choice.
I want to remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay. David, does that require a second, and?
I think at this point, probably it doesn't, it should require a motion, a second, a vote.
Have a motion, a second to remove.
You mean, we don't get a chance to sit through Mr. Pike's PowerPoint presentation?
I don't think he's here.
No, he's not. Maybe he's listening.
Okay, David, since we have removed.
After you vote on the consent agenda, on the two items that remain on the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I hear? Yes, it's kind of a community, community thing.
You take the fifth?
All in favor? All opposed? In favor, it was unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, on the one that we took off the consent agenda, with it being on the consent agenda, I did not have Stephanie come tonight, so just understand, if we discuss it, she's not going to be available.
I can discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
And probably, just for housekeeping purposes, I was looking, it probably would fit well under number, it's number five, under G, governing body.
Number five under what?
G5.
G5?
G.
G5.
G is in governing body.
Sounds like we're playing bingo.
F4 is mine, so.
Okay. Now, we will move on to tab A, Community Development, Ms. Vicki Coleman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
This first item is item RA-0117. The applicant is Mr. Doug Dickinson of Villarica, Georgia. He's requesting a rezoning of a property located along Edge Road from, it's currently zoned rural development to light industrial. This item did go before, this is a deferral from last month, it went before Planning Commission last Tuesday night. Staff recommendation is support of the applicant's request. Additionally, the Planning Commission voted three to two in support of the request to rezone the properties as well. It did come before you last month, and just to give a really quick update, the staff recommendation did change. There were a couple of items that we took into consideration. The applicant, from the first Planning Commission meeting and when it came before, City Council modified their site plan, and with some of those changes, we took certain things into consideration. One, we are right at the cusp where the city should be going through the comprehensive plan update, so we took into consideration that certainly this would, this could be a particular parcel that would be recommended to be designated as light industrial or of an industrial use, particularly with the adjacent properties to the east side currently designated as industrial through zoning. The other consideration that staff took in with the proposed change, the existing properties to the southwest that are currently zoned and used as residential, there was a change with the site plan that left the five acres that abutted that property to the southwest, that that would remain residential or potentially undeveloped with the modified site plan and the new legal description that was drawn up. The property that's designated as Track One would go as light industrial. So that was the two major reasons why we changed the staff recommendation. The other part of that is, if at any point in time in the future where a subdivision would be proposed, that particular subdivision would have to go back as a preliminary plat before the Planning Commission, so have an opportunity for Planning Commission to review the site plan again.
You have to have a public hearing on this, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, we would.
Okay. This is the public comment portion for this week. Seeing none, the discussion will revert. Make a motion, accept?
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve?
A little bit of discussion. I just want to say that I've looked at this before and talked about this before in conjunction with our future land use map, and I know, you just made a good presentation about how we're looking into that. I do think that we should, we should give a lot of deference to that map, because it's a map that we put together. But I also think that when staff makes a recommendation, we should pay attention to that, and I think that when our boards make recommendations, we should pay attention to that. So I didn't want to do this without saying that I do think the land use map is important, but here, in this case, I think this one is a little different.
I've got a little word to say. The future. John likes to follow that up, but the Industrial Development Authority has been very successful in using the land to bring industry and business into Villarica, with the help of Carroll tomorrow, of course, and they've just about exhausted our supply of industrial land. So we do need more industrial sites to offer up, to draw the businesses, because that's the jobs that are coming with the businesses. So that's the reason we consider going against the future land use map. We would like to give some logic to it.
Okay. Further discussion? If not. So move. Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two.
The next two items on the agenda are related. I would like to take the, to bring those to your attention. Annexation 0117, and with the concurrent rezoning, RA-0217, the applicant, Green Community Development, which is represented by Mr. Christopher Hunt, the request is to annex what was originally 10 acres and has now grown to possibly 16 acres of property located along South Van Wirt at Church Road. This item came to you last month, I'm sorry, let me finish saying, and the request is to rezone that property concurrently from agricultural, which is the designation in Carroll County with a four acre minimum, to planned development within the city of Villarica. That item came before you last month as public hearing only to introduce the proposal. This would be the first opening up of a public hearing. The applicant has requested a deferral or continuation until the June calendar, and staff is recommending a deferral as well. The applicant did a couple of things since the last site plan. One, they submitted additional acreage that was, that wasn't originally there in the first proposal, and also they're going to be modifying the site plan, and that is not before you yet, which is one of the reasons why staff recommendation is deferral. This went to Planning Commission last week as well. Planning Commission was also in support of the deferral, just because, again, there wasn't any information for them to consider at that time.
Okay, so the recommendation is for us to defer this another month. David, do we need a motion, a second on this, or?
Yes, you would.
we should pay attention to that. So I didn't want to do this without saying that I do think the land use map is important, but here, in this case, I think this one is a little different.
I've got a little word to say. John likes to follow that up, but the Industrial Development Authority has been very successful in using the land to bring industry and business into Villarica with the help of Carroll tomorrow, of course, and they've just about exhausted our supply of industrial land. So we do need more industrial sites to offer up to draw the businesses because that's the jobs that are coming with the businesses. So that's the reason we consider going against the future land use map. We would like to give some logic to it.
Okay, further discussion? So move. Any further discussion, all in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two.
The next two items on the agenda are related. I would like to take the, to bring those to your attention. Annexation 0117, and with the concurrent rezoning, RA0217, the applicant, Green Community Development, which is represented by Mr. Christopher Hunt, the request is to annex what was originally 10 acres and has now grown to possibly 16 acres of property located along South Van Wert at Church Road. This item came to you last month, I'm sorry, let me finish saying, and the request is to rezone that property concurrently from agricultural, which is the designation in Carroll County with a four acre minimum, to planned development within the city of Villarica. That item came before you last month as public hearing only to introduce the proposal. This would be the first opening up of a public hearing. The applicant has requested a deferral or continuation until the June calendar, and staff is recommending a deferral as well. The applicant did a couple of things since the last site plan. One, they submitted additional acreage that was, that wasn't originally there in the first proposal, and also they are going to be modifying the site plan, and that is not before you yet, which is one of the reasons why staff recommend, staff recommendation is deferral. This went to Planning Commission last week as well. Planning Commission was also in support of the deferral, just because, again, there any modifications that come, sometimes they're as long as 90 days, if you will, because wasn't any information for them to consider at that time. these modifying site plans and things of that sort naturally come up as an applicant gets
Okay, so the recommendation is for us to defer this another month.
out and potentially engages the community. So it's not uncommon to have changes within the cycle that may ultimately be updated.
David, we, do we need to motion a second on this, or?
Yes, you would.
So I would certainly say that that's something that you might want to consider, but I understand your position. I would also add with this one, last month's, what was introduced to you last month was merely just the introduction of this is coming, and we certainly want to make you aware of it, but I would certainly defer to the city attorney if there's anything else that he certainly may want to add.
Yeah, I would just add to that point is that I understand the frustration you expressed, but at least as to this particular application, it is following the procedure set forth in our existing zoning ordinance to the letter, and so if you wanted anything done differently, you'd have to change the zoning ordinance.
Let me point out one other thing. Can you come to?
Mr. Micklin, I think, is there not something in our ordinances or codes that says if something is denied, they have a year, they can't bring it back to us for a year?
That's right.
Further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Okay, that is unanimous. Item number four, traffic calming device.
The Community Development Department received a request from the residents along Golfer's Way. Their request was for the installation of traffic calming devices. I forwarded you the information as it relates to the ordinance that really spells out what the procedures are. We did receive the petition, a copy of the petition should be in your packet. The police department completed a traffic study, and certainly Chief Mansour may be able to talk a little bit about what warrants were required to be met and whether they met them or not. The additional information that was also provided to you just also included a, really more for illustrative purposes, what the various types of traffic calming devices, because I know that was a question that came up, and estimations of cost, if you will. The information that we put in the cover sheet was essentially $5,500 to $6,000 was one of the estimates. We talked to another traffic engineer just to give us another cost estimate, and which was more or less in line with that as well. So I'll turn it over to Chief Mansour.
We discussed this in the work session as far as the speeds and that, based on the speeds, as far as us doing anything there, as far as enforcing, we discussed all of that already. This is one of those that we do need something to slow people down, and this may be one of the options, is that the, which one you decide on is up to you guys as far as cost goes, because they're, they requested, if I remember correctly, three that they're wanting in that area, so that's a pretty, pretty sufficient cost or pretty, you know, high cost if you do all three, so it may be something that we can compromise or do some of the cheaper ones or, you know, something y'all need to discuss.
In the work session, we requested to go back and review. We've gone over this traffic calming in a big manner several years back, and we were going to go back and review that and have what we decided back then. Who was in charge of doing that?
Well, I think you've got a copy of the ordinance, and that's what.
Well, we did get a copy of that ordinance, and we got it kind of late today, and some people only got it when they got here.
Yeah.
But what, what I would say is, I did read through it because this affects my ward, it probably affects everybody's ward, but this petition particularly came from my ward. I am not aware that anyone asked for three, traffic calming devices, whether they be these tables or humps or bumps, but what I am proposing is that staff take a look at what would be most prudent on Golfer's Way. I probably think only one would be needed, but what I did ask about in the work session was those costs, and what I have here doesn't, it gives me a square foot cost between asphalt and concrete, but it doesn't tell me the difference between a table and a hump and a bump in terms of cost.
Own cost, yeah.
It does tell me what each thing is. I'm inclined to believe that we don't have a speed table in the city of Villarica, considering they have to be 22 feet long. I believe we may have a couple of humps, but I'm probably thinking, I'm no expert, but a bump might be enough over there.
We have some bumps.
Now, again, it's, it's for illustrative purposes. I did pull the diagrams that are listed here out of the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, so the dimensions here that are certainly spelled out, I would imagine you may be able to make some kind of modifications, but this is pretty much, again, me trying to give you an illustration of what it would look like. So, you know, if you're looking at, in this particular instance, it would be 12 by 12, or excuse me, 12 by 24, that gives you the square footage, and then that cost per square foot based upon whether it's asphalt or it's concrete would give you an estimate of what the cost would be for an installation of, let's just say, one of, in this particular case, it'd be a speed hump.
Okay, I appreciate that, but here, I don't really want to be figuring this up with a calculator, so I guess what I would like to know is what you could propose for us and the cost of that. I would have made it a little bit.
A range, a range or something, just give us some general.
Because putting a number out here like 16, 5 to 18,000 just sort of makes everybody step back a minute.
Well, that was the initial proposal, cost proposal when we talked to staff, it was roughly $5,500 to $6,000 per hump. That's how we came with that range, and the discussion was potentially three. This was staff discussing, which is how we came back with the proposal.
And that was per hump.
Correct.
As opposed to a bump or a table, okay.
I'd like to help clarify a little something here with these price ranges that were requested. There is some difficulty, as I see it right now, because the range that we've got, and we've talked to a couple of engineering, engineers that do this type of work, I think number one, we have to determine wherever we put a bump, a hump, or a speed table, we need to have a very tight design spec for what's going to go in that application. Not all the road widths are the same. There could be drainage issues that you have to account for, you've got signage involved, you've got striping involved, all of that is a cost. Then again, does it apply to the community to where it is? If you want to go fancy, then the price tag is going to go up. If you want to have something that's just kind of generic, of course, the price is going to reflect that too in a downward fashion. What I've come up with, a speed bump is going to be limited to try to keep the speed like five miles per hour, because it's short in terms of the width and it's also high, so when you hit it, it has a jarring impact, so it's really for a really low speed, almost a parking space kind of application. What would be more in tune with the residential street would be the hump, and again, how wide is the road is going to figure into the cost? Are you going to put it in a crosswalk, and then you have to incorporate elements that go into that crosswalk, and that all adds to the cost. Giving you a price example, we do have one speed table, I would say the one that was at North Avenue, I checked it out, I think that would qualify as a speed table, and there's a lot of elements involved with that, because it has to incorporate, send across walk and walkways and drainage. So the quotes that I got from engineers were, if you had just one speed bump, it could be $1,000 to $2,000. If you had a series of them, or excuse me, it could be, if you had a series, it could be $1,000 to $2,000 for, say, three or four per. If you had one, the price could be $2,000 just for one of them, just the trouble of going out there and setting up and installing it. The speed humps, which of course are considerably different, because generally they're anywhere from six to eight foot in width, up to 12 feet. The range, I've seen as low as 2,000. We mentioned, recommended 5,000, 6,500 at the work session. I've got a more updated one that could range from 5,000 to 8,000 for the speed hump. Now, if you go large with the speed table, which I don't see that as in an application out of Golfer's Way, but, because that's 22 foot wide, that's a pretty big footprint, those things can range low in 5,000, and that's probably rubber, so I think the realistic range is 12,000 to 15,000 per.
That's true.
So, and they could even get pricier than that, so that's what we've come up with.
I can't imagine that a speed table would be what we're talking about anyway, on Golfer's Way.
No, I don't think that application. And we, I did, I did go out and measured Golfer's Way, I think it's, the full run of it's about 1,200 feet, and so the recommendation in the, the ordinance that we have, the guidance that we have to go by, the recommendation is within the first 100 to 150 feet entering into there would be appropriate for a speed hump. If you wanted to put another one, say a second one, it'd be at least within 350 to 500 feet away from that one.
Would you, would you really need more than one?
I don't really, I'm not that familiar with the traffic flow in there, and I think the cul-de-sac at the end would probably have some slowing, because you have to slow down to approach that, so it could very well be that, that you only need one, you know, 150 feet from the entrance.
And does the ordinance spell out, I know we, we beat this horse a lot back then, and we couldn't decide whether or not the city paid for all of it, or it was a cost share, whether we paid for part of it and the community paid for the other part of it.
This ordinance is pretty clear that the city reserves the right to themselves only to do this and to incur all of the cost.
Okay.
Right, it certainly says that, but it also spells out when the warrants are met, if you will, so that's one of the reasons why we brought it before you, to see how you wanted to handle it, particularly in cases where communities are requesting it, and they may not meet the warrants as established by the ordinance.
And which warrant are you talking about?
To speak to your question too, researching some other communities, Winnet County, a few other communities, they actually will tack on a dollar amount to the property tax, and it's a renewable thing, as long as that speed hump is there because the speed hump has to be maintained. And in some cases, they have petitions, if people don't want to pay that, then they have to go back and petition it, get enough, a large, the adequate percentage to do away with it before it can get removed, so you, you know, you have issues going either way with it.
My concern about adding more tax on is, everybody that lives in the city is already paying city taxes, and I think if we're going to put a speed hump table or whatever in, we're recognizing that there's a safety issue on that road. I think it's our job, the city's job, to make sure the roads are safe, and I would like to think maybe even about budgeting monies for traffic calming, and then maybe it won't hurt so much, and then prioritizing annually, maybe doing a few here and a few there, because I can think of a number of places that need them. We've had people ask for them, the fact is, it would cost a fortune to put them everywhere that everybody wants them, they at least have to meet some criteria, and I'm telling you, looking at this Dogwood thing, it's scary to think the amount of cars that are going that fast on Dogwood, and we could blame it on Villarica PD, couldn't we? But we can't, because the way the laws are written, and I.
We did this, but what I.
In other communities that I've certainly worked, the zoning cycle is much longer for any modifications that come, sometimes they're as long as 90 days, if you will, because these modifying site plans and things of that sort naturally come up as an applicant gets out and potentially engages the community, so it's not uncommon to have changes within the cycle that may ultimately be updated, so I would certainly say that that's something that you might want to consider, but I understand your position. I would also add with this one, last month's, what was introduced to you last month was merely just the introduction of this is coming, and we certainly want to make you aware of it, but I would certainly defer to the city attorney if there's anything else that he certainly may want to add.
Yeah, I would just add to that point is that I understand the frustration you express, but at least as to this particular application, it is following the procedure set forth in our existing zoning ordinance to the letter, and so if you wanted anything done differently, you'd have to change the zoning ordinance.
Let me point out one other thing. Can you come to?
Mr. Micklin, I think, is there not something in our ordinances or codes that says if something is denied, they have a year, they can't bring it back to us for a year?
That's right.
Further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. Okay, that is unanimous. Item number four, traffic calming device.
The Community Development Department received a request from the residents along Golfer's Way. Their request was for the installation of traffic calming devices. I forwarded you the information as it relates to the ordinance that really spells out what the procedures are. We did receive the petition, a copy of the petition should be in your packet. The police department completed a traffic study, and certainly Chief Mansour may be able to talk a little bit about what warrants were required to be met and whether they met them or not. The additional information that was also provided to you just also included a, really more for illustrative purposes, what the various types of traffic calming devices, because I know that was a question that came up, and estimations of cost, if you will. The information that we put in the cover sheet was essentially $5,500 to $6,000 was one of the estimates. We talked to another traffic engineer just to give us another cost estimate, and which was more or less in line with that as well, so I'll turn it over to Chief Mansour.
We discussed this in the work session as far as the speeds and that, based on the speeds, as far as us doing anything there, as far as enforcing, we discussed all of that already. This is one of those that we do need something to slow people down, and this may be one of the options, is that the, which one you decide on is up to you guys as far as cost goes, because they're, they requested, if I remember correctly, three that they're wanting in that area, so that's a pretty, pretty sufficient cost or pretty, you know, high cost if you do all three, so it may be something that we can compromise or do some of the cheaper ones or, you know, something y'all need to discuss.
In the work session, we requested to go back and review. We've gone over this traffic calming in a big manner several years back, and we were going to go back and review that and have what we decided back then. Who was in charge of doing that?
Well, I think you've got a copy of the ordinance, and that's what.
Well, we did get a copy of that ordinance, and we got it kind of late today, and some people only got it when they got here.
Yeah.
But what, what I would say is, I did read through it because this affects my ward, it probably affects everybody's ward, but this petition particularly came from my ward. I am not aware that anyone asked for three, traffic calming devices, whether they be these tables or humps or bumps, but what I am proposing is that staff take a look at what would be most prudent on Golfer's Way. I probably think only one would be needed, but what I did ask about in the work session was those costs, and what I have here doesn't, it gives me a square foot cost between asphalt and concrete, but it doesn't tell me the difference between a table and a hump and a bump in terms of cost.
Own cost, yeah.
It does tell me what each thing is. I'm inclined to believe that we don't have a speed table in the city of Villarica, considering they have to be 22 feet long. I believe we may have a couple of humps, but I'm probably thinking, I'm no expert, but a bump might be enough over there.
We have some bumps.
Now, again, it's, it's for illustrative purposes. I did pull the diagrams that are listed here out of the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, so the dimensions here that are certainly spelled out, I would imagine you may be able to make some kind of modifications, but this is pretty much, again, me trying to give you an illustration of what it would look like. So, you know, if you're looking at, in this particular instance, it would be 12 by 12, or excuse me, 12 by 24, that gives you the square footage, and then that cost per square foot based upon whether it's asphalt or it's concrete would give you an estimate of what the cost would be for an installation of, let's just say, one of, in this particular case, it'd be a speed hump.
Okay, I appreciate that, but here, I don't really want to be figuring this up with a calculator, so I guess what I would like to know is what you could propose for us and the cost of that.
Or a range, a range or something, just give us some general.
Because putting a number out here like 16, 5 to 18,000 just sort of makes everybody step back a minute.
Well, that was the initial proposal, cost proposal when we talked to staff, it was roughly $5,500 to $6,000 per hump. That's how we came with that range, and the discussion was potentially three. This was staff discussing, which is how we came back with the proposal.
And that was per hump.
Correct.
As opposed to a bump or a table, okay.
I'd like to help clarify a little something here with these price ranges that were requested. There is some difficulty, as I see it right now, because the range that we've got, and we've talked to a couple of engineering, engineers that do this type of work, I think number one, we have to determine wherever we put a bump, a hump, or a speed table, we need to have a very tight design spec for what's going to go in that application. Not all the road widths are the same, there could be drainage issues that you have to account for, you've got signage involved, you've got striping involved, all of that is a cost. Then again, does it apply to the community to where it is? If you want to go fancy, then the price tag is going to go up. If you want to have something that's just kind of generic, of course, the price is going to reflect that too in a downward fashion. What I've come up with, a speed bump is going to be limited to try to keep the speed like five miles per hour, because it's short in terms of the width and it's also high, so when you hit it, it has a jarring impact, so it's really for a really low speed, almost a parking space kind of application. What would be more in tune with the residential street would be the hump, and again, how wide is the road is going to figure into the cost? Are you going to put it in a crosswalk, and then you have to incorporate elements that go into that crosswalk, and that all adds to the cost. Giving you a price example, we do have one speed table, I would say the one that was at North Avenue, I checked it out, I think that would qualify as a speed table, and there's a lot of elements involved with that, because it has to incorporate, send across walk and walkways and drainage. So the quotes that I got from engineers were, if you had just one speed bump, it could be $1,000 to $2,000. If you had a series of them, or excuse me, it could be, if you had a series, it could be $1,000 to $2,000 for, say, three or four per. If you had one, the price could be $2,000 just for one of them, just the trouble of going out there and setting up and installing it. The speed humps, which of course are considerably different, because generally they're anywhere from six to eight foot in width, up to 12 feet. The range, I've seen as low as 2,000. We mentioned, recommended 5,000, 6,500 at the work session. I've got a more updated one that could range from 5,000 to 8,000 for the speed hump. Now, if you go large with the, the speed table, which I don't see that as in an application out of Golfer's Way, but, because that's 22 foot wide, that's a pretty big footprint, those things can range low in 5,000, and that's probably rubber, so I think the realistic range is 12,000 to 15,000 per.
That's true.
So, and they could even get pricier than that, so that's what we've come up with.
I can't imagine that a speed table would be what we're talking about anyway, on Golfer's Way.
No, I don't think that application. And we, I did, I did go out and measured Golfer's Way, I think it's, the full run of it's about 1,200 feet, and so the recommendation in the, the ordinance that we have, the guidance that we have to go by, the recommendation is within the first 100 to 150 feet entering into there would be appropriate for a speed hump. If you wanted to put another one, say a second one, it'd be at least within 350 to 500 feet away from that one.
Would you, would you really need more than one?
I don't really, I'm not that familiar with the traffic flow in there, and I think the cul-de-sac at the end would probably have some slowing, because you have to slow down to approach that, so it could very well be that, that you only need one, you know, 150 feet from the entrance.
And does the ordinance spell out, I know we, we beat this horse a lot back then, and we couldn't decide whether or not the city paid for all of it, or it was a cost share, whether we paid for part of it and the community paid for the other part of it.
This ordinance is pretty clear that the city reserves the right to themselves only to do this and to incur all of the cost.
Okay.
Right, it certainly says that, but it also spells out when the warrants are met, if you will, so that's one of the reasons why we brought it before you, to see how you wanted to handle it, particularly in cases where communities are requesting it, and they may not meet the warrants as established by the ordinance.
And which warrant are you talking about?
To speak to your question too, researching some other communities, Winnet County, a few other communities, they actually will tack on a dollar amount to the property tax, and it's a renewable thing, as long as that speed hump is there, because the speed hump has to be maintained, and in some cases, they have petitions, if people don't want to pay that, then they have to go back and petition it, get enough, a large, the adequate percentage to do away with it before it can get removed, so you, you know, you have issues going either way with it.
My concern about adding more tax on is, everybody that lives in the city is already paying city taxes, and I think if we're going to put a speed hump table or whatever in, we're recognizing that there's a safety issue on that road. I think it's our job, the city's job, to make sure the roads are safe, and I would like to think maybe even about budgeting monies for traffic calming, and then maybe it won't hurt so much, and then prioritizing annually, maybe doing a few here and a few there, because I can think of a number of places that need them. We've had people ask for them, the fact is, it would cost a fortune to put them everywhere that everybody wants them, they at least have to meet some criteria, and I'm telling you, looking at this Dogwood thing, it's scary to think the amount of cars that are going that fast on Dogwood, and we could blame it on Villarica PD, couldn't we? But we can't, because the way the laws are written, and I.
[inaudible] In other communities that I've certainly worked, the zoning cycle is much longer for any modifications that come, sometimes they're as long as 90 days, if you will, because
And they done it because they were worried about the safety of the street that they lived on. And I don't think it's asking too much to ask this council to put a speed bump out there to slow some of that traffic down if we're not going to be able to use police officers to enforce it. If there are other streets that need this, and I am sure there are, there's a process for it. And I'd be happy to look at everyone that comes in here. I've been out to Goffers Way a number of times and I'm telling you, it, it can be dangerous at times.
And there's no sidewalks.
There's no sidewalk and they can't put one out there. The HOA would like to, but there are gas lines that run out there in the right-of-way and they can't put sidewalks out there. So, you know, I hear us talking about three or two or one. I'm proposing that we, we authorize one and allow staff to go out there and make a decision about where to put that one.
Because you have, they've been talking about it for years. So just because they didn't do a petition that counts them out, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I believe that's a question for staff. I certainly don't mean to imply anything like that. I just, I feel like if it, if it rose to the level of concern, they would do the work. They would go out and get those signatures.
My question is, does it rise to, does it meet the ordinance? Because it's speed criteria. They did a study and it didn't meet the ordinance.
When Janet was here and we were doing all this, if I recall, the problem is, I got
this when I got here, so I didn't get a chance to review it again. And I wish I remembered all the details of these ordinances. I think it came down to there's criteria, but when it comes down to it, we get the say-so.
That's right.
Whether it meets the, whether it meets whatever that threshold is. That was my recollection. I'll double check on that.
Because sometimes the exact process that's put in place may not work on every single street and that's why that discretion is left to the council. What Danny is talking about, Councilman Carter, is, is that this ordinance actually requires that on the speed tests that are done, that 85% of the vehicles that cross must be doing at least 40 miles an hour. How in the world does that make sense on a street like that? Or really, Dogwood. I walked up and down Dogwood as a kid to school every day. And believe me, we didn't have near the traffic then as we have now, but that, that's a narrow road. I think you make an excellent point.
Now, that 85 percentile threshold to me is just over the top. But to Ms. Shirley's argument, there's also some people that have been asking for this for years. So Pete, you thought you were going to sit down. What if, what if, could we save money if we, if we commit ourselves to let's start doing something about this? There are places that we realize cannot be enforced. If we contracted with a company where we're going to do a number of speed bumps, humps, whatever, the cost might come down, right? Compared to if you have somebody come out to your house and only do one thing, but if they know they're going to have ongoing work, maybe they'll give you a package price or something. And so maybe between the L-MIG funds and a package price, we could even bring the price down a little and start addressing these streets, different ones that we know about that are issues. Is that possible?
Let's, let's address the one that's forcing on Goffers Way. I would like to see them come up with a cost to put a speed bump in. I think a speed bump will slow the traffic down. One speed bump on Goffers Way should solve the problem.
And I would like to make that as a motion.
Can I clarify?
Yeah. You said bump.
The bump is like you're driving through Ingalls parking lot. You've got to go really slow because that thing like knocks your teeth into your head when you go-
You slow down. Who pays the bill? The city.
We have a, a little one, the hump.
City.
We have like a rubber one in our neighborhood.
Have we paid for it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. A small rubber one, but it's a cul-de-sac. Oh, do I need to be quiet?
No.
Knocked their car out. I mean, it's been there for a number of years now. But it's not good for where, you do have to really go slow. So it wouldn't be good for some neighborhood streets.
I'm aware that the city put in much because there was a request from the community to do that. And there were many, many, many complaints about it because of the jarring effect of going over that speed bump. So we ought to test it to make sure that the people that want it are going to be satisfied with it. Because they're, you're right, they're the ones that'll have to go over it day in and day out. And if it is jarring, if, if it's not satisfactory to begin with.
We need to send up to Ingalls, the back way into Ingalls, there's a good one on that road.
We need to move this discussion along. We have talked about this long enough. So, so what is the council's design?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to a hump either. It's just going to cost more.
I would like to make a motion that we allow staff to put in one speed hump somewhere on Goffers Way as they determine is the best location.
Do you want to put any parameters on cost?
I'd like to know what the cost is.
Know what the cost is.
Why don't you make a motion and we get the call?
Pete, didn't you say that you'd already measured Goffers Way and that you had those numbers?
I'm lying 1,200 feet long.
Okay, you're only talking about the length. Okay, I would amend my motion to have staff come back with a proposal and a cost estimate for a speed hump on Goffers Way in June.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to- Three, four, all opposed? Unanimous? I think she was for it.
For. Slow fall.
Tab B.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I have a request by staff for a budget line item to replace three of our 12-year-old medium-duty dump trucks. All are in poor condition. The maintenance costs are routinely exceeding $3,000 a month. And these are the trucks that we see going up and down our streets every day, taking care of our solid waste program. One of the trucks in particular that pulls our chipper is dangerously close to needing a new engine. It's going to be nearly a fourth of the cost of one of the new trucks. I believe we can keep it running long enough if we can get this passed this evening. The total cost for three of the trucks on our state contract low bidder, which was weighed forward, was $231,147. The line item budgeted for our medium-duty truck programs this year was put together back in October of 2016. At that time, the number of 221,000 had come up. So that leaves me with a $10,147,000 deficit in acquisition cost. I have two things that I believe we could come up with that with. One would be the surplusing of one of the trucks, which we could put a reserve on for $15,000. And I don't think I'll have any problems getting that forward. The other one is, there's more than that much money in the maintenance of repair line item for the solid waste vehicles, which would basically go away to nothing but tires and oil changes because these trucks will have a two-year warranty on them. And there, I think there's roughly 16, 15 to 16,000 dollars in that line item right now. Either one of those two items would be there and we could probably find other places. It would be the staff recommendation that we accept the low state contract holder bid of 231,147 to get these trucks on order and get them here as soon as possible to save cost and not put an engine in one of those other trucks.
Charlie, just for those who work-
In there and then a trash truck.
And after review, staff-
Between that, that, you know, limited by our staff not having but one CDL driver, if we could, we have talked to our street department staff and we're working on getting CDL licenses. And maybe at some point when we can have that happen and we could maybe look at a 25 cubic yard truck, that might make sense.
It's just not cost effective.
It's just not cost effective and with the maintenance cost on our dump trucks, I think this is just a better use of our tax dollars at this point.
Make a motion, accept. All opposed, two accept.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Charlie.
Did you, did you have a number two when you were talking?
Oh, I do, yeah. It would be to request that when these trucks come in, we surplus the worst of the three older trucks. And I'd like to keep the two better ones, for lack of a better word, that for natural disasters and occasional use by other departments that need to borrow a truck occasionally where we don't have to call the street department back in and take one of their trucks.
Tab D.
Good evening.
Evening.
First up, we have the financial update from March. As Chief mentioned, we are currently in the middle of our audit for 2016. Hopefully that'll be wrapping up soon and we'll have financials, I hope, by the next meeting. Again, this is March, which is three months, 25% through the year. We'll start with our general fund, which is the administration for the city, the police, the Parks and Rec, senior center. You can see there that the total cash at the end of March was 7.5 million dollars. And our reserve or our unassigned fund balance was 6.3. That'll be updated after this next audit. The next part is our major revenue statuses. The general fund, a lot of our money comes in at the end of the year when property taxes come in and things. So we haven't received that much yet. So far with our local op, local option sales tax, we've received 15% of the budget. That first month is booked back to the prior year because it's attributable to December. Property tax, we've received $47. Everything we've received so far in 2017, again, is attributable to the prior year. So we'll see that coming in at the end of the year. Occupational tax, we've gotten in so far 63%. We received a lot of that at the beginning of the year. And this last one, this is a new item, not that the items themselves are new, but looking at them this way, permits and inspections. We were budgeted at just under $100,000 and we've already doubled that at $209,000.
214% increase.
That's great. City's growing. Fund status right there, that's in total. You can see revenue and expense. Our budget for both of those is 11.9 million dollars. If you go, you can see year-to-date there. And then if you look at the next item, that's the percentage of budget. So when I talk about we're 25% of the way through the year, that's where we would want to see that we're somewhat in line with that. So with revenue, we're at 13%. Again, general fund, a lot of it comes in at the end of the year. And then our expense is at 20%, which is less than the 25%. Going on to water and sewer. I'm going to scroll with Alisa. The cash for the water sewer fund at the end of March was a negative $874,000. This is, again, not a negative balance in the bank, but as part of our pooled cash, it owes the other funds $874,000. We do have a CD of 2 million and our outstanding bond is 33 million. The reserve there is 1.4 million. We talked about this the other day. That equates to basically just shy of the three-month reserve. So when you think about your personal finances, it's good to save three months' worth of your expenses in case you do run into an emergency. Our major revenues there, water sales, sewer sales and tap sales. You can see percentage of budget. Water and sewer are just, water and sewer sales are just slightly less than where they were last year. But tap fees, we've come in at 63% higher than we were last year. So that's great. Next is fund status. Revenue and expense in total for that budget is 7.1 million dollars. Again, if you go to the third column, that's where we compare that to where we should be in the year. We receive 15% of the revenue, which some of what we receive in January is attributable to December, so I've moved some of that out. And then in our expense, we're at 21%. Lastly, solid waste. This also has a negative cash balance, which we will be talking about the next item, how we fix that. And then also a negative reserve. Revenue so far, we've received 19% of our revenue, which is slightly less than last year. And going on to the bottom, the expense, we're right at 25%.
Can I, can I ask a question right there? Sarah, when do we, when does our contract with Waste Management Services come up for renewal?
When we talked in February, I think it renews every April. So when I presented in April, in February, we were too late with the window. We must have to give a 60-day window or something. So if that's something we, we need, we want to consider, then we need to be looking at that by the end of the year because again, it is April.
I'm just one person, but I certainly think we need to look at that. If we haven't negotiated that contract since when?
I want to say it lapsed in 2011. It's been a few years that it's just been automatically renewing every year.
Yeah, I think it's up to time to re-invent.
Certainly time.
I think we need to look at that.
One thing with that, when I was researching it, and 2011 may be too far back, but in their contract, they, part of it is that they can bump the price up based on CPIU, which is Consumer Price Index, urban. Our, you know, as we do the rate study, that needs to be something that we are taking into consideration. Because if they're bumping the rates on us every year, we need to consider that that, that eats into our bottom line, that we're not passing that price.
If I had a-
Did we do this thing?
Exactly. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah, help me out a little bit. Remember, I'm the old fat football coach.
Getting fatter every minute.
Getting fatter every minute. Help me understand why it takes to May and June to end up with all of the bills and whatever for 20, for the year previous year?
I don't know if it takes that long to end up with them, but we're still analyzing things until the audit. So we look at the first two months of the year for revenue and expenditures. And if it was for the prior year, we book that back to the previous year.
The first two months, so January, February? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Moving on. Back in March, the city requested proposals for a utility rate study. This included water, sewer and solid waste sanitation. As we discussed last week, the scope included determining new rates that would generate sufficient revenue. As we saw, the cash is negative and our reserves are either low or negative. But also looking at the methodology of why we charge certain customers certain ways. And the hope is that the company that we select will look at how, how the different types of users are using the water. So if you have commercial users that are using tens and thousands of gallons of water versus your average residential person using 4,000 gallons, they'll look at that and what that does to the system, you know, peak times and that sort of stuff. And they'll figure out why we charge residential customers a certain way versus commercial. We'll look at the needs for future capital. In our budget process, we did do a five-year capital plan and we will probably look out five more years. So we'll be looking at 10 years with these, with this firm. One of the big things being the future water treatment versus water purchase. We'll look at the comparison of that. We'll look at the debt service. We have, I believe, 28 more years on our bond, so we still have a while to go on that. And they'll be looking at that. And lastly, looking at revenue requirements to bring up adequate reserves. While we do have in the water sewer fund just shy of three months, I mean, that's bare minimum for emergencies. We need to build our reserves so we have room to grow in the future as the city grows. So that being said, before we met last Thursday, the Public Works Director, Pete and I, we- So, that being said, before we met last Thursday, the Public Works Director, Pete and I, we met and we looked over all six of the proposals that we received, we graded them based on their company experience, their understanding of our project, the technical approach that they were going to use, and we rated them, gave you our top three, which were Public Resource Management Group, Burns and McDonnell and Raffetellis. And after we met Thursday, we went back and opened the price proposals, which were sealed. We opened those on Monday. So this is what Elisa's showing you right here, these are the prices we opened on Monday. You can see there's kind of a big gap there. Public Resource Management Group is $67,697, Raffetellis is $37,510 and Burns and McDonnell, which is $74,300. Again, these were our top three and all seem qualified to do the job.
Did you go through the references they gave you? Did you?
We reached out to a few. Were you able to? I'll bring Pete up here.
Pete, why don't you just get you a chair and stay up here?
We tried and we were unsuccessful in reaching a lot of these references. There was one at Rockdale County, Dwight Wicks, he's a utility director there and I've known Dwight over the years, was able to get him at 5:30 today, so I feel good that we reached out. But he spoke very highly of Raffetellis. He said they're extremely thorough, they did a fantastic job for them, they've used them on two different occasions. So he was singing their praises very, very high. So, felt good about that because I do know Dwight and he's been in the business for 40-plus years and knows what he's doing.
So your recommendation was to use the low bidder?
Yes.
Now, I'm just an old fat bass fisherman, but.
The number of hours that they proposed would only be 190 hours, while the others were closer to 300 and over. I think another, probably bigger thing, is Burns and McDonnell, they're engineers, so, and then the other one, the Public Resource Management Group, they're CPAs, so their billing rates for both of those are going to be higher than this other group who didn't seem to have engineers or CPAs on staff. I think they were more on the economic side, which does just as good rate analysis and things, economic analysis, so, again, after reading their proposals and things, we felt like these, again, were our top three without even looking at prices and I know the second time Pete read them, he was even happier with Raffetellis, as was I, so I think we would be comfortable going with them.
That's a great answer, thank you.
And one thing I'd like to add to that, I know with Raffetellis, they had, their principals are very experienced, but they also combined some of their new hires to do the kind of the pulling together the facts and the minutia, if you will, and it just seemed to me like they were more efficient in how they're going to approach this project.
Cost effective.
You've got, when you looked at some of the others, they were pretty heavy in personnel that they were adding to this, which I think ran the cost of.
And basically, just to summarize, this is going to give us.
We asked them, we asked them to look at 10-year overall, but we asked them to come back to us with a three-year, so a more aggressive plan, how do we get back in the black, or a five-year plan, which might be easier to swallow. So, that's what we asked of everybody and can't wait to see what they have to say.
And they fully understand?
I would think that this may be somewhat of a living document, too, that as we unfold with all of this, that there'll be some opportunity to come back and tighten these numbers up and the forecast and what we're looking at.
Counsel, what is your decision?
I talked to Raffetellis before we started and one of the ones that didn't make our top three, Pete and I did sit down with, again, before this was voted on to do the rate study, but the other two I haven't met with.
I personally know many people at Burns and McDonnell and some of the principals that were identified in this particular project.
I guess. Good suggestion. Have a motion to. Budget amendments for 2016.
All right. We have wrapped up the 2016 numbers and given them to the auditors, obviously, but I can still come back to them with some budget amendments and I'd like to do that. The state requires that no governmental fund go over budget by any certain department, so looked at those, just the departments to see where we might be over budget and these are those items that I wanted to address. Some of them are just housekeeping, but I guess they're all housekeeping, but they do across many funds. Councilwoman McDougal asked me to look at, just to start with a summary of total revenue changes, so you can see at the top there, total revenue changes, this would be increasing revenue, $340,700 over these funds, so this would be citywide. Total fund balance changes would be $1,454,721 and we'll talk about those individually. And total expenditure changes is $1,795,721. Okay. First, we have the narcotic fund. We did add at the end of the year, well, we had several vehicle purchases in 2016, I believe at the end of the year, we purchased additional equipment for those vehicles. This came out of our narcotic fund, so this is just, we need to increase the budget for that line item and basically use fund balances, how I'm referring it to, but the narcotic fund and the federal seizure funds, those built up over the years as monies are seized, so this is really just to use prior year funds that were seized. Next, this is UDAG. I believe in 2016, the council voted to forgive the debt between the general fund and the UDAG fund, so we have moved that to the general fund and we have $500,000 holding as two revolving funds, half of that for the DVA and half of it for the development.
UDAG is an acronym for?
Urban Development, I may have to look to someone else, something, Urban Development. I don't know what the A is.
Something or another.
Something grant.
But that's, from my understanding, that's not what the funds truly were anymore, so that's why I want to close out this fund. So this budget item is to, I did transfer the money over there again to hold for those two revolving loans, so this is, I say use the fund balance, but it's really just cleaning the fund balance out and sending it to the general fund. Next is the Hotel Motel Fund. We did bring in more hotel motel tax than was budgeted, so I need to increase revenue for that. And then the offset of that is the increased transfer, 40% to the Convention Visitors Bureau and 60% to the general fund. And then the other item there, in early 2016, I discovered that $72,000 had built up in that fund from previous years where the hotel motel tax wasn't transferred out, as it should have been. So that was $72,000 that we put towards the gateway grants that were approved by the council during 2016. So, again, says use the fund balance, I'm figuring that out and we moved it to, we paid to the DVA for that. Next, Public Facilities Authority, this is where we have our bond and we have to pay bond trustee fees every year for the accounts that they hold for us, so this is just increasing the expense for that and we do increase, or we do transfer money from the general fund and the water sewer fund for those fees, so that's increasing the revenue of the transfer. Next, SLOST, this, these are projects and we can, we'll talk more about the library in a minute, but these are projects throughout the year that, like the police vehicle, that was approved at the end of the year, but that wasn't in the original budget, so I need to increase that line item. Fence at the mill, as we discovered, that wasn't building a fence, that was the temporary fence that we purchased, I believe that was at the beginning of 2016, but it was in the 2015 budget, but it didn't get done then, so that money was slated in '15, which went into fund balance, so we're using the prior year SLOST funds to cover that. Same thing with the Villa Rica Elementary Gym, I think that was at the end of '15, rolled into '16. The library, this was additional expense and we'll talk more about this in a minute. We had an $8,000 expense to AT&amp;T to set up the cable for Uverse there, the site survey and then part of a payment to West Georgia Regional Library, that was part of that SLOST. We had the grapple truck, again, that was approved by council and then the next items, they cancel each other out. Basically, instead of accounting for the water sewer SLOST projects in the SLOST fund, I need to transfer that money to the water sewer fund. So you can see at the bottom, total use of prior year SLOST money is almost $214,000. Okay. Next is 2015 SLOST, this is $2,200. The library payment went slightly over, so I just need to increase that line item there. Capital Projects Fund, this is actually for the landscaping. In 2016, we sold a portion of North Avenue to Tanner Hospital and we received $100,000 for that, which was set aside for landscaping at the new library. So this is, that was approved in '16, this is just to increase the budget for that. And Water Sewer Fund, this is, as I talked about, the SLOST project transfers, I need to increase the revenue for that at the top. We did go over on our water purchases because from January to July, we were 100% buying water, so I've gone, that line item has gone over. I need to increase that by 150,000 and then, as we spoke about on Thursday, last summer, the auditors discovered that the wastewater treatment plant was being depreciated out of the general fund and that needed to be moved, so that wasn't part of our 2016 original budget, so that's $700,000 there. I don't know if y'all are following along with me on these pages, but to balance that budget out, we need to either use fund balance of the water sewer fund or transfer from the general fund. Since we only have, like I mentioned a couple times, we only barely have three months' worth of reserve, I don't think it would be wise to hit that in this one year. It is in our 20, what year are we in? It is in our 2017 budget, but since this wasn't budgeted for 2016, that would reduce our reserve by a third. So my recommendation would be, since the general fund reserve is healthier, to take it from that for this particular instance. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I got a question on the top number here, 1.8 million. Does that mean we overspent 2016 by 1.8 million, the budget we approved?
Well, I mean, we're seeing different things, like transfer to UDAG, that's $550,000, that wasn't necessarily an expenditure, we're just using the money in a different way. SLOST projects, I mean, they go from year to year, so some of these things weren't necessarily finished in '15, but they're in '16, so you're using SLOST fund balance, but SLOST is a multi-year project fund anyway, so you may not use that money up in that particular year. The depreciation one, that's a big hit to this, so yes, you're right, but it's not a cash transaction thankfully, but it does hit our bottom line, so I think those are some of the bigger items there. The UDAG, use of SLOST funds and then this depreciation expense, which, again, is not a cash transaction, but it does hit our bottom line. Next is the solid waste fund. Our disposal, or the landfill fees, went over by $15,000, but I had some room because one of our revenue lines went over as well, so that's $15,000.
I want to ask a question that is similar to the one I asked about waste management. I know we have an intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County for use of the landfill. Have we, when has that been renegotiated? Because I hear that that may be going up as well for 2017.
I do not know, but we can look into.
I mean, '18.
I think we just use them on an as-needed basis. I don't believe we actually have a contract with them.
I think we need to, staff needs to reach out to Douglas County and see what their plans are for 2018, because I have heard that they may be going up on some of those costs, so we need to certainly budget for that.
I go back to my question last Thursday now. Water purchases from Carroll County Water Authority over budget, so we pay them $150,000, but we got some money back when we sold that amount, whatever it was. Does that not offset to make it even in the budget?
If that's how we had been set up to purchase that water and then just sell it, then yes, I see what you're saying, it would be a one-to-one, we pay for it and then we sell it, but in this case, we were set up, we were budgeted to produce water and only purchase a portion of it. So we had expenditures, like we were going to produce the water, the water treatment plant, the chemicals, the personnel that it took to staff it and the purchasing on top of it. So we really had more expense than was, than we budgeted for the same amount of revenue.
Okay.
Any questions?
Sarah, you did a great job and basically what this is, is housekeeping, you know, a lot of these things, the money's already spent. I think the.
In the red or the black?
We didn't finish in the red. The answer's no. Okay.
Going to do, yes. But if we, going back to the big item, if we transfer from the general fund, then the water sewer fund will be in the black, otherwise it's going to be in the red.
We're actually putting money out of our fund balance?
Yes.
Brings back the candy bar. We need to make a motion to approve these budget amendments.
We do.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendments for 2016 as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous. Reluctantly unanimous. Thank you, Sarah. Tab F, Parks and Recreation, Parks Recreation and Leisure Services. Excuse me.
Hello, the item before you this evening, this is the Mill Amphitheater Sound and Lighting Contract. City staff put out an imitation of "Beed, If You Will" and for sound and lighting for 2017. We received two responses back with that, two responses back on time. And with that, the two responses, staff is recommending approval of pop audio in the amount of $30,050. The second response, of course, was $128,000, so. I don't know if you have any other additional questions, I think that one was.
I had one question, just to make, to confirm something in my own mind. You know, last year we had an issue with our number one summer concert, I think, when the artists provided their own equipment. Is that taken care of in this agreement?
That is absolutely addressed, so that is not on the calendar of events.
Okay.
That's the Velcro pygmies, right? They bring their own stuff.
Correct.
Do we check references on this company?
Uh, I think we do.
Are you able to get them on?
He's in the audience, for those of you that didn't know.
Yes, working this evening to appear with the mic challenges.
I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, accept.
Have a motion to accept the bid and I have a second. Councilman Marshman, all in favor? Unanimous. Tab G, Governing Boarding, Municipal Clerks Week. Acclamation, who's going to read?
Proclamation. Who's going to read it?
This is a proclamation, uh, to recognize municipal clerks week from May the 7th through the 13th, 2017. Uh, this was brought to my desk by our clerk, who basically said, sign it or else. Uh, we did, uh, but we're asking that you, uh, allow us to do that and to have this proclamation read.
Our state, sir. Who's going to read the, would you read the proclamation, sir?
You want me to read the proclamation? You don't want to read it? Okay. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public service, servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organization. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Jeff Reese, mayor of Villa Rica, do recognize the week of May 3rd through May 13th, 2017.
It says May 7th.
May 7th through May 13th, 2017, as municipal clerks week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Alyssa Doyle, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they re, they represent, dated this second day of May, 2017.
I move to accept that proclamation. I'll, I'll move to accept the.
That, that's the.
And I don't see any reason why we should penalize an employee that has already served the city well and is drawing retirement, who chooses to run for an elected position because you don't get paid much in the elected position. So I see no reason to penalize them for that reason.
We talked about this at the, um, at the work session and the reason I asked to remove it from the consent agenda is because I wasn't clear on the criteria that a person would need to meet in terms of their age, uh, in order to make this happen. Can you help me with that?
Under the current term. I mean, again, if you, if you're, I'll just use examples because that's the best way I can explain it. If you are of. Changes, because that's what the policy reads right now.
I hear you say we're still looking at the change. What, what is that earlier age?
Selecting elected officials, is that what you're?
Am I, am I mistaken? Uh, help me. From what you're saying, say I worked as, um, the clerk and I retired as clerk because I was working for the city and I retire, I'm drawing my retirement, been retired for three years. So then I decided to run for council member. Are you saying I can still get my retirement and then, and then be, uh, a council member? Is that what?
Yeah, on, on the question. At the right age, then, then you're entitled to, to your benefits.
Right.
And, and yes, you are entitled to, to those benefits.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you run for council.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and you are, and you're not already drawing, you know, if you haven't retired and you're not drawing those benefits, then, uh, and you run for council and are elected, you, you can withdraw it and receive it, but you have to be 62 years of age.
Right, right. Uh-huh. I'm 62 and I decide to run for council member. I'm going to still get my retirement, plus I get my little two or three pennies from the council.
That's right.
Let me take that.
You can draw.
Let's make it early retirement.
Right. Um, if you are working for the city, again, I'm giving you my understanding of the policy as it exists and we're still talking to them about it, but, uh, if you work for the city and you retire at age, or you're not retiring, but if you leave employment with the city, because you're not really retiring until you have, have reached at least 55 and, and you're leaving employment with the city, um, then if you're already drawing, you're early retirement and then you get elected, then yes, you can continue withdrawing and you can, uh, qualify to, to receive benefits as an elected official.
Okay. Well, the obvious question now becomes, I'm, I didn't draw early retirement.
Right.
I got elected and now I'm 55 or 57. I'm not to the 62.
Two.
Um, you're saying that you would not qualify based on your understanding right now?
Under the.
We'll have an option to change that.
We, we're, that's what I'm investigating.
I mean, just to save a little time, do we need to table this and come back and look at this next month, once you have the information on that? Because the goal of what we were doing, uh, was to make sure that a person wasn't penalized.
Correct.
Who had previously had employment with the city. Now they suddenly, or you know, if, if they were to be elected, they couldn't have a retirement that they would have had otherwise.
Yeah. Well, uh, the direct answer to your que. So, uh, I, I, there's, there's no. Well, uh, if, if we can convince them to make some additional changes, and again, I, We're going to do everything we can to, uh, to, to come up with. The GMA, the GMA. They're, they're not only.
So if we pass this, would this encourage them to lean our way?
It's not going to make any difference.
I thought I was clear on this, but now I'm more confused than I was last week.
But. Not unless we get, uh, a definition from GMA allowing us to do so.
Okay, so this.
GMA.
Sounds like we need to wait until we hear back from.
Yeah.
That we don't have any control.
I'm thinking we need to table it with direction.
Yeah.
To come back to us with clarification on what powers we do have to make the changes that you understand we're, we're trying to get to.
Okay.
Do you want to go to the June meeting?
That's a motion.
I second.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, sorry. I forgot I was, I was Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. Uh, then I, a motion that we table this, I second it, didn't I?
Have a first and a second. Now you'd like discussion.
Any discussion. I think we've discussed it.
Just today.
I'm out of vote.
More discussion.
Where does the, the 10-year, uh, employment fall into this category? Well, that is. In your service as an employee. Mm-hmm. Before you are vested in, in the plan.
Uh.
But you don't have to be have 10 years of service on the council. No, no, I'm talking about 10 years of, of service to the city to be vested. Uh, is there a stipulation in that about age or does that carry over to the other parts that you just talked about? No, they're absolutely, let's say I'm a 21-year-old who comes and gets a job with the city of Villa Rica and I work till I'm 31 and I quit. I'm vested in the, I get retirement benefits when I get to retirement age.
What is retirement age for the city?
Enjoy it right there.
What, what is the retirement age?
Uh, retirement age for the city is 65, but you, you can qualify for early retirement at a reduced rate at 55 as, under the employee plan.
Okay.
If you, if you get elected as a councilperson at age 21 and serve four years, you're going to be entitled to draw a retirement benefit when you get to be retirement age.
Okay, the Mayor Pro Tem would like to entertain a vote on this. All in favor of tabling this till the next meeting? All opposed? Unanimous?
All right, moving right along.
Back to the mayor.
Moving right along. Executive sess, uh, tab H, executive. Mr. Maplin.
Uh, the proposal. For the purpose of discussing employment compensation, hiring, uh, of a public officer or employee.
Make that motion.
Have a, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor? We are in executive session.
Well, the note I got is apparently my dog, she doesn't like it when I leave. Okay? She must have been in the backyard. I left in the truck. That's the dog's call. She must have jumped the fence. Everywhere for her. He couldn't find her. So now he's left to go back. I'm like, go home and look for my dog.
Hey Ken.
I was involved in that, but.
No, I don't. I'll make sure there's not.
We have a lot of property.
Where's that neighborhood thing that I belong to?